Eric, would you please leave us in prayer? Would everybody stand? If they don't stand, we do it.
Please don't be in prayer. Father, it's another beautiful day in the neighborhood. We'll just thank you for the air that we have to breathe, for the freedom that we have to live in America. Thank you, God, for community, for all the citizens that live here and those that will make decisions for the betterment, not for selfish reasons, but, God, for the inclusive reasons of our community that we can build on and be proud of. Thank you for the decisions today, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. If you'd like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, or remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should have called the meeting before we did that. We'll do that now. Thank you very much. So what happens when you go on vacation and get sidetracked? All right.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll send the motion.
Ben, the motion is seconded. All in favor, say aye. Three ayes. Mr. Parker.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
Regarding the release of the lease between Pete Bell and the county, I think in several meetings ago, you voted to sell and/or move that property back to the owner of the building. So one of the formalities that I thought was included was the abolishment or revoking or releasing the parties that originally leased that property. And so we've...I'm asking the Commissioners if by way of motion you could confirm that so we can move this document and get the quit claiming done.
I'd like to have a motion for the release of the lease to Pete Bell, of the property that we tried to transfer to somebody else and couldn't because it was still leased to Pete. That hasn't been released yet.
I'll move the motion. Second.
Ben moved in second to release the lease. All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Regarding the...I've got my notes. And just as a reminder, I'm going to read this first little paragraph down to the FYI. As you know, and I think more and more people are realizing, what the Economic Development Group does in Fayette County, we are the marketing authority for the city and county. And our group's main function is business retention, expansion, and attraction. So we're engaged in job creation and workforce development within Connersville and Fayette County. And we do a lot of that with the Workforce Development Center that we've established at the Ivy Tech campus. I'm not going to stretch this out by reading the whole thing, but I would like you to take notice of that first yellow. We've formed the Intelligent Community Task Force, which was one of our tasks that Roberto Giardo wanted us to do. You recall the professor from Purdue University, who was working with Fayette County and the region for the purpose of making us more e-friendly and able to open some new doors for commerce through this initiative. So that...the survey and checklist was completed. The next phase was putting the task force together, which we've done. And our first meeting will be on July 10th. And then...and this has appeared...this has been in the newspaper already, but there's the list of the nine individuals, and that may grow to one more. We may have 10. That's...we're not exactly positive or sure that that's going to happen, but we know we've got nine committed, and you see their names there. Appreciate those individuals who attended the stellar meeting on June 7th. And you'll recall that the...we're striving or trying to make our five-county region a stellar region. They've done away with stellar communities, and now it's a stellar region. And we're the only five-county group...we're the largest group that's seeking that designation. We think we got a pretty decent shot at getting this stellar...what do you want to call it? Designation. If we do, then we...there will be some health and wellness dollars, and there will also be some workforce development dollars that will come out of that stellar designation. The only thing that I have beyond that is the...certainly want to put a plug in for my good friend Dave Caldwell and the Whitewater River Cleanup. You know, when we have a...anything in Connersville that's cleaned up and looks better helps us when people are looking at our town to move to. It's just not always industry that are considering a move. One of the things that I've been somewhat involved in is some of the hiring at hospital. And they want to see the community. They want to know about the schools. They want to know where's some decent housing. And cleaning up anything anytime is good for Fayette County and for Connersville. It helps every business, including, in this case, the hospital. When doctors come here to consider Connersville for their employment, they want to see the city. And so I've had the pleasure of showing the city to a couple of doctors who, for whatever reason, decided...I don't think it was anything I did, but he decided to come to Connersville. It's...I'm not the cleanup guy for the whole city and county, but I will say that cleaning up Connersville and this cleaning up the river is important from just an apparent standpoint for our community. So that's going to happen on July 14th from 8 till noon, and then everybody will meet at Robinson Campground just south of town on 121. So...and then the other thing that I wanted to mention is the Community Youth Day that will be at the Miller Building on July 12th. And I think that's all that I have, other than that document that I need to get into, I think, your office, to Jane's office. So I thank you and appreciate your support of economic development. Does the Commissioners have any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
You bet.
Jane has to have it. She has to.
This is perfect. There you go. Thank you.
Is a sheriff hiding behind the podium or someplace? I've got him on here. Paul Freed, you're next.
Okay. Okay, I'm here today on a human resources issue. Seems like I am most of the time. As you know, a couple weeks ago, my court reporter put in a resignation, which about made me cry. I already told you that last time I was here. But I come up with a plan, and they always tell you, you know, if you're asking for something, start with your strongest point. So here's what I'm going to tell you right off the bat. What I'm proposing costs $0 more than what I'm already appropriating. Okay? So I know you're in love with the idea already, right?
I've just tried it.
You had me at $0 there.
Good point, Paul.
All right. So within the budget that I already have appropriated, she had indicated to me, for example, just offhandedly, that her health insurance was so expensive relative to what she made here, and she's so effectively poor, and her husband's a student as well and works also, but doesn't make a lot because he's not working full-time, that in the formula for the Healthy Indiana Plan, the HIP plan, and they have a child as well, that she can get insurance much cheaper and less out-of-pocket than what it costs her contribution to the county health insurance. And so I ran some numbers, and I found, and she kind of indicated, I think I would make more on part-time and just paying for HIP on my own, and I'd end up pocketing more money because my contributions to the county's health is so high. No fault of yours, I understand. It's just the circumstances. But so I got to looking into that, and you know, we're shorthanded. We've been a whole person short up there for...way before I was judge. I would like you to consider adopting my strategy here of taking the full-time position of the court reporter now and dividing that into two part-time positions. And if you take her current salary, about $18,000, and her count...the county's out-of-pocket expense for her health insurance, which is $16,000, again, already in the budget, and then it's about $2,000 a year for her PERF, the county's contribution to her PERF. You add those three together, then you take the other part-time employee that I already have and put her appropriation into that kitty as well, like that's about $13.500 or something around about that nature, and then divide it by three. I could add a part-time employee, convert the existing court reporter to part-time, keep the other part-time employee that I already have, and divide that by three and pay them whatever I could afford to pay them within that appropriation that I already have. So effectively, because she doesn't need the health insurance, distributing her benefits costs to the county amongst what would now be three part-time employees. What I get out of that, of course, is I get an extra employee, which is handy when people quit all the time. Because, you know, a fraction...one person quits, one out of four quits, that's one-fourth problem. If you've got five people, one out of five, you know, it's a little bit less impact. And we can cross-stream people, and it's just a little bit less impact when people leave. And they're going to still leave at that kind of rate of pay, no doubt about it. That's not a solution for that problem. So if you take 28-hour-a-week part-time standard, and now you have two of them, you have 56 hours between the two part-time employees that you're making out of the cost of one current full-time employee versus a 34-hour-a-week full-time employee, so I pick up 22 hours of manpower for my operations at zero extra cost to the county. Are you following me? Okay.
Yes. I think Dale may want you to help him with budgets if this goes on.
So this is what I would propose to do. And the other thing is, it's beneficial to them because, as you know, courthouse, certainly court employees typically work at Walmart or somewhere else as well. They all have second jobs. So that just frees up an extra almost a day or six hours a week that they could work somewhere else as well and make some more money, so improving their life situation. So that's what I'd like to ask to do. And then, you know, if there's any leftover as well, because you don't get paid vacation when you're a part-timer, you know, so the budget would be for the 28 every week, but if they take a sick day, well, that's just, you know, they don't get anything for that, or they have to take a day off, go out of town to a funeral, or...they don't go on many vacations, I'll tell you, at $18,000 a year. But so if there'd be a little bit of slack in there, certainly Amy, my court administrator, well, I'm just going to tell you, I mean, she's...that's illegal. It's been going on for decades. Worked overtime, not got paid for it. I'm just...that's just a fact, okay? I mean, we're way beyond.
Please don't discuss that.
Yeah. Yeah. But I mean, it's Jesus volunteered. It's just what it is.
Jane, a couple of questions for Jane. There's a part-time rate for that job classification already established, number one. Number two, correct me if I'm wrong, but the...in order to use the health insurance dollars and the PERF dollars, we'd have to do a budget reduction and a budget increase? Because they're sitting in the Commissioners?
Yes.
Transfer funds.
Transfer from Commissioners' budget to Superior Court.
Okay. And then the council would have to...
Approve.
Approve a...the employee changes as far as number of part-time employees and number of full-time employees?
Sorry, Dan.
Because they establish...the council establishes the number of employees and their job classifications in order to do that. Is that...isn't that correct, Dale?
We don't actually count heads, but we...
Positions.
By simple appropriation. Line item appropriations, yes, we do determine how many...the number of employees. I understand the judge's dilemma. Personally, I don't care how many part-time employees he has, as long as we don't keep increasing the court's budget unnecessarily. And I haven't run the figures on what he plans, but on the surface, it sounds cost-neutral.
Yeah. Yeah. And the other thing is, then, if not only it would be cost-neutral, but you can actually then, which we need to do for retention, if you take that stack of money that I'm talking about, current full-time salary, current health benefit, county expenses, health benefit, current PERF benefit, current appropriation for the existing part-time employee, divided by three, and then divide by 28 hours work reach for each of the three, you can pay them more per hour than the current wage for the part-time employee that I already have, which of course...
That would be the council's decision.
Which of course increases my retention as well, and again, does it without costing any more money.
Okay.
Well, that's what I'd like to...whatever you think you need to do to make that happen, that's what I'd like to propose.
I'd like to sit down and answer your question.
And I'm...it is a time-critical thing. I mean, she's got other...I'm going to have a whole bunch of experience trying to walk right out the door, I mean, right before I started, right before it's a problem.
So the budget...Jane, the budget reduction and budget increase...
Have to be advertised.
And done next month.
Next meeting.
Yeah, next council meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that'd be the soonest we could do it.
Okay. I think I can go through and stay until then.
You can get it to hang in long enough for...
I hope.
The government to do its slow moving.
This is someone you've already got hard.
She's my current court reporter.
Yes.
And then when we divide her job, I'll be hiring a new person from the outside, which I already have lined up as well, and I would like to make that happen as well.
Let's try to make this happen by the next council meeting, then.
Right. And I'm going to go see Dale tonight and give the same spiel, so you get here twice there. All right. But there's a lot of stuff in there. The basics, which is coming up, three part-time employees. But the other thing is, I would like to have, if there's any excess in that fund, just because they happen to take a day off because they have to, or a sick day or something, if there's a little slack in there, I would like permission to use that money to pay an extra hour, whatever a little bit might be there, to my court administrator as well. And then also the issue of the hourly rate. I think it's going to be $13.11. That's my math, but you all can correct the numbers your way and see what you come up with. But I think that's what I could pay three full-time employees under this plan.
Three part-time employees.
Part-time employees, yes. $13.11 an hour and still stay within my existing appropriation. That's the way I had it.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right. See you.
Joey still on here? Richard's not here. He's hiding back there. Okay. Mr. Cohen.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We got the three miles of Millens laid. Everything turned out really good out there on 500 and Beaver. The buzz happy with it and sticking together. We're back on the chip sealing. After the day, we'll have nine miles of chip sealing. It's just been taking us a while with Millens. We've got them laid. I'm wanting to double seal 400. It's pretty bad shape.
South.
400, we're coming out family, and 700 coming from Wayne County to Bentonville is pretty bad shape too. It's going to take quite a bit, but we can get her done. Another thing is, I want to look in and get three quotes for an ice machine. We've been buying ice and amongst ourselves and stuff. We used to have one. We've got the monies to do it, but I want to see if that's all right, if we can get three quotes, see about getting one down at the shop. We had one before when Howard was there, and things went down back then, we got rid of it, so I would like to have another one down.
So that's how we used to...because we were talking about this morning, we were...Howard used to have the five-gallon jugs...
Yeah, and...
On all the equipment.
Yeah. And we got the jugs. We just got buyer of ice and stuff, so you guys are okay with that? I can look into that.
I'm not so sure that it would be cheaper just to buy ice.
Yeah, I don't know.
Ice machines are pretty expensive.
We've been buying ourselves. I don't know where we can get the monies for it, but we can keep doing that.
But we can do it through...to create policy?
Yes.
Didn't you email?
Right. State Department of Defense said if we create a policy allowing the county to, as a safety measure, when it's hot, that then we buy them ice and water, the county can pay for that for you guys.
Then another thing, since it's brought up, our safety guy with IPAP, we might be able to get us a safety grant for safety equipment, and that's something that we can get into that. I'll explain more of that once I find out more about that too, so. It revolves around safety vests, ice machines, safety boots, and it's just all...it'd be good for us to get it. Union County got it last year, so I'll explain more of that once I find out.
Do you have to write a grant or have a grant writer or what?
We just got to fill out the grant application, and that'd be something I would probably do with Diane. She would know more about that.
All right. Can you tell them what route she picked for that?
Yeah, I can roughly tell you. 475, it was...that's the one we talked about last year off of 121. Goes through Columbia, and then we call it Stony Lodge down in there. I can't remember the road number, it's just the old number. Taking it all the way out to Fielding to 44. That would be a main route from 121 all the way through Columbia into 44.
And in turn, once that's done, we'll have a main route...
All the way across the county.
...to State Route 1.
Yeah.
That's a 44 to State Route 1 connector.
It'd be nice, and it'd be really good for the fire department coming out of Everton, making runs out that direction. The other one is Wellsview, coming from Wellsview going all the way to Springfield Road. And there's a lot of subdivisions in that area. You've got Wellsview and Antimoes and Joe Road, which got the nursing home there on the corner, and that's not in the best shape right now anyways. And we're going to try to shoot for that prepared pen to get that cornered in that one stretch. I don't think it's maybe...not even quite a mile.
Straight quarter of a mile, I think it is.
Yeah.
And that'll complete that project.
Yeah, we're kind of going to go...yeah, that needs to be done. It all revolves around the score of the roadways, and we'll go through that more. We've got more meetings on that. And I got another thing is, part-time guy is mowing. Trying to do the best we can. Somebody...we had our brush coders down. Somebody busted a window out of it down at the Columbia Community Building. We don't know if it was from somebody mowing or someone drove by, if they rocked through it. We don't know. But we got it down right now. We got...which will be put in Thursday.
Okay, get back on the ice machine now.
Yeah.
On that, I think what we need to do myself is go ahead and let them purchase the ice and the cores what they need, and keep running a count of the cost and then see what the cost of an ice machine would be, you know?
We go through the ice and water, that's for sure.
Personally, I think it'd be better for them to have the ice machine themselves.
Well, I'd make a motion that we create a policy that we allow the highway department to purchase ice for the water jugs during hot weather, extremely hot weather throughout the summer. I'd make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Ben moved in second to make a policy that the highway department may have ice, and they can purchase that, and then we'll determine whether to do an ice machine at a later date. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
That means it don't have to come out of your pocket.
Yeah.
We talked about earlier about two trucks. We're trying to get that done yet this year.
Yeah, I still ain't heard from trucks. I'm about to just hang up the trucks and just bring in the two that I had. I've called, I've emailed, and I got no response from trucks. It don't make sense to me because they're just right down the road from the other.
And did you add another truck for next year's budget in that budget?
After the two this year?
Yeah.
No, we need to.
We need to put one in a new budget proposal for '19 so that we can start getting on a rotation basis of a truck a year.
Quitting too would be nice.
I have another question. Could you look into what it would cost to paint the roof of your building and that superstructure that you used for the salt and sprays? See what it costs us to get it painted?
I can most definitely do that.
Make it match the roof of the buildings?
Match the building, yeah. That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can check that out too. We ain't really spent much time there, so we...
Yeah, I know. Since you have a list of the chip sealers, could you email that to me?
Yeah.
So I've got a copy of what you're going to get done. You said 450 or 550 or...
400 and 700.
700 north?
700 north, double seal.
Okay, yeah.
From Wayne County to...
Bentonville.
Yeah. And 400 is destroyed. We've sprayed it, sprayed it. We just need a thicker layer on it. There's a lot of heavy traffic comes in and out.
At least from 550 to...
Yeah.
The county line.
Yeah. That's probably the roof stretch.
Yeah. And if we can at least get that double sealed, and then are you going on east of 550?
Yeah.
With a single?
I'd like to take it all the way across.
Well, we really need to consider that because that being the bypass, at least one more mile...
Yeah.
Around Bridge 25 right now, because it's going to get a lot...it's getting a lot more traffic.
Yeah, because of the bridge.
Yeah, because of the bridge, so we want to protect that road, that stretch.
And the farmers are going to be harvesting, and since Bridge 25 won't be down until November, we're going to have a lot of traffic on that road.
Yeah.
Yeah, in a couple months.
I guess we can build a ranch and start jumping the bridge.
It looks like they're really coming along.
Yeah, that's good, I think.
You got anything else?
No.
Now's the time.
I ain't got none. Just chipping.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, Michael King? He's hiding behind the voting too.
Morning. Just a regular month, get a quick report. I don't have the email stats, since we changed services. It's really hard to compile since the rules between how the stats were done between the two services is not the same. Phone calls for the month, we had sixty-six thousand eight hundred and two with thirty-six thousand four hundred and seven answered. Tickets looked like they were down for the month, but I was off for a week, so Mike handled everything, so he's got more tickets this month. At ninety-three, I had a hundred and five, when normally around a hundred and seventy. So he handled all the tickets, but he didn't do a lot of the other research and little stuff that I tend to do during the week I was gone. I do have one thing that needs to be approved, that's the MetroNet copy of paperwork I gave to you guys. Need to get a phone for the drug court, this would be for Drug Court Officer Craig Bennington. And then need to get a voicemail set up for Ken Fall, who's going to be working through with the prosecutor's office on the drug court. As far as I know, he's only gonna be here one day a week, so he doesn't actually need a phone, not that we really have anywhere to place a phone, since we're pretty much running out of office space. So he'll receive voicemails on that, they will go to his email address, he can listen to the voicemail, and then he can use an available phone to call the person back. So that's what that paperwork's for, if I can get that signed off on, I can get that in process. The new printer for the clerk that you guys approved last month, she's using it, it's working great. She went from printing off six to eight ticket jackets a minute to about six or eight in about ten seconds. So it's really sped up her work, she's having less problems with jams and all that kind of thing, so. Other than that, I don't really have anything going on that needs approval. I am working on a new webpage, working with John Pausi over at the city. We're trying to come up with a way to revamp the webpage before our hosting contract comes up again next year for renewal. There are things that we like about our current website as far as how it works and how it's edited, but there's, it leaves a lot to be desired as far as cost. I mean, it costs us a thousand dollars a year between us and the city, so five hundred dollars a year for a website, when we could do it for about twenty bucks a month or less total between the two parties, instead of a thousand dollars between the two parties for the hosting. So it is something that we're gonna redesign. We've used CS Kern, it's a, you log in through the website with the current one and it can be edited. It's a nice little system, but it, it leaves a lot to be desired as far as moving forward. It's the same website now as it was four years ago. Unless we make this change, four years from now, it may very well be the same website, even though the web keeps changing. So it's just one of those things of keep moving forward, and if we do it this way, well, it'll also give us more security. I don't know how often CS Kern changes things on their side as far as security, but when you leave something static for that long in the computer world, you're, you're leaving it more available for hackers to get into, so. Any questions or anything for me?
Not today, I'll probably do some later. Thank you.
You need, you need this approval?
Yes, please.
For MetroNet? I'd make a motion that we approve the advanced service agreement with MetroNet that he's presented.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Okay, thank you.
You just need her signature?
Just need one signature.
Do you have a copy, Jane?
Jane has the copies.
Health Department. Hello. So as you know, the Health Department has been going through some changes, and we have been looking for ways to improve our office. And one thing we thought was to maybe amend the fee schedule and raise the price of TB tests. Right now they're ten dollars and have been for years, I'm sure. We called around to a few of the surrounding counties, Rush County charges twenty dollars, and Wayne County charges fourteen, and to get one done at Reed Urgent Care would cost ninety-seven dollars. So with ours being ten dollars, we have people from surrounding counties coming to us. Every daycare, school employee, a healthcare facility sends employees to have these TB tests done. We've done a lot of them lately, so we thought we'd like to ask for permission to raise the cost from ten dollars to twenty.
So TB?
TB, mhm. And just the serum alone to do the test is over seven dollars for each, so we're not making anything. By the time you get a needle, a Band-Aid, paper, administering one, we're not making anything.
How much does health insurance generally pay for? Do they reimburse you pretty well?
They do, they reimburse a hundred percent.
Okay. I'll accept a motion to raise the fee for the TB test to twenty dollars.
I, I move that we increase the TB test fee from ten to twenty dollars for the county Health Department.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any other fees you need to change yet, or you're still checking it out?
I think Bruce has talked about maybe raising some of the food permit fees, but I don't think he's ready to do that yet, so. As of now, just the TB tests. Thank you.
I have a question for you. Do you guys give a shot for shingles?
We don't have the new one yet, we usually have a drug rep that comes around and gives us...
The new one's two shots, isn't it, like?
Yeah, it's a series of two.
Is there any idea what it costs?
No, and that's why we haven't ordered it. We have not had anyone come to us and, you know, give us any information on the new vaccine. We don't know as far as Medicare billing, what the reimbursement rate would be. And just with everything, we haven't had a chance to really look into it, so.
Okay.
We're not offering it at the time, but a lot of people have called asking about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Warren Seale. Good morning.
Morning.
I have here four utility permits for Frontier along County Road eight fifty west, county line, Rush County line, from about two hundred south to Franklin County line. Some of it's connected to existing poles and some of it's boring, but at two hundred north, they wanna run the cable to that tower that's right there several hundred feet into Fayette County, so. I've looked at them, did the field check, so. I've got signatures here I'll give to you and sign later, and have the county attorney look at it if you want.
Okay.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
Are we protected against, if we should damage that cable, or it ain't gonna, we ain't gonna have to pay any damages or nothing?
You'd have to look at the agreement on the permit then.
To make sure we have a whole comment clause.
I can have her attorney look at it.
And then, are you gonna inspect that after they do that to make sure that they clean the mess up? Because out here at Trail Court, they didn't do it.
Okay, either me or Richard.
Okay.
I assume Richard would wanna do that. I'll give you the permit forms for him to look at.
We're just passing over to Ann. We're gonna have her with us before we sign anything on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Warren, is that two hundred, is it, did you say two hundred north or two hundred south?
I thought it was two hundred south.
Okay, is that there at the S curve?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're gonna do some work right at the intersection, and then I think they're connecting existing poles over to their tower there, I think five, five hundred, six hundred feet?
Yeah.
East of the county line on the south side.
Is that on private property or?
No, that's their own tower, I think they have, they have an address.
Oh, I'm talking about the distance from where they're connected.
No, it'll be...
No, it's on County Road. That's in the permit. Okay, the other item here, I, I have a design contract for replacement of Bridge ninety on Waterbury.
Okay.
From Butler, Furman, and Seifert. It's for approximately two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Of course, it's based on wage rates and time and everything, but it's like eighty-eight pages. And we have to send this in to NDOT for their review before you have to sign it. So it's another contract, it's a basic boilerplate NDOT contract with the consultants added and requirements for the DBE and all that in here. So again, I can send it in to NDOT and have the county attorney look at it in the meantime. Hopefully I have it back.
That's the little bridge right outside of town here.
Yeah, it's, uh... Estimating maybe ninety-five, hundred-foot new bridge, and it'd be extra wide with a sidewalk on one side. Of course, we have right-of-way maybe one property owner there. And this would be for either twenty, twenty-one, or maybe twenty-two construction. But this is just the design, the beginning, so it includes a survey, environmental impact study, and then get to the right-of-way engineering, so it'll take approximately three years. Hopefully, I've been told, we submit invoices, NDOT will pay eighty percent. We've got a grant for one point three, something like that, for the construction. So that's in here too.
But the fee for, just the design is what?
About a hundred and twelve thousand. Includes soil borings, and also in the soil borings, we take samples of the borrow pit on County Farm. And, but I said we possibly could use County Highway backhoe to dig, and it'd save us some money on that. But it's approximately thirty thousand just for the soil testing. And the topographic survey, I think it's eleven or twelve thousand.
And the weather environmental study, and make sure we're not killing any bats or worms or something.
Yeah. Yeah, historic study, of course, it's...
Thank goodness, ninety is not a select bridge?
No, it's not a select bridge. The last one is, I think, about gone, I was out there yesterday.
Yeah.
And they were jackhammering the end, the west end, so it should be about gone today or Thursday. They're not working tomorrow, but they put up the metal arches underneath, three of them.
Yeah, I saw the pictures.
Okay.
Looking very interesting.
Yeah, I think they're about a third done, money-wise, so.
Okay.
I think they'll meet the deadline, so far, not going to.
Weather permitting.
Yeah, okay. So should I give this to county attorney to look over?
Yes, please.
On another subject, Warren, Mr. Moore.
Yeah. High receivers?
Yes. That, I went up there and talked with him and looked at it as well. I told him what I thought, it looked like it was a tiled ditch attached to a can.
Yeah.
And that chances are it would be astronomical to redo that tiled ditch because of clearing trees and so on and so forth. And I asked him if it was a, if there was a possibility that if he would object to opening that can up and allowing it to discharge on top of the surface.
He was in my office yesterday.
Well, I got a phone call, I mean, yesterday or the day before.
Okay.
So, and he left me a message, I think it was yesterday. And he's under the impression that we're not gonna do anything, and I'm still have questions of whether we shouldn't open, at the very least, open the can up and maybe try to create a natural levee to get that over into the valley.
Well, it's going across somebody else's property too.
It's going across the same guy's property that it leaves.
What is? I thought it was somebody different.
He said that, he told me the guy across the road where the grate is.
Okay.
Owns the property next to him.
Oh, okay.
His son.
And he's got the backhoe, he's thinking of using, he said.
He, all he told me was, if you can call me, I'll let you know what I'm gonna do. Well, I, I just seen us work on our can.
Okay, well, it was across can there, Richard and I looked at it.
Did you probe, and there is a can, or?
We went to the inlet side and saw there was a can there, probably a two-footer. And we, there's a suckhole at the end, the outlet on the county's, and then there's another suckhole in his lawn.
Two or three suckholes?
Yeah, we didn't go down and probe it, it's, he thinks it's three foot deep.
And the only way I see us affordably fixing that is get that can dumped out on top of the grate.
Yeah, it'd be an open ditch then, yeah. Instead of a tile or a pipe, whatever it is.
Whatever is under there. And at the very least, I think that's our responsibility.
It's probably ground, it's not a legal drain, so.
But that's our can.
The, under the roof.
Yeah.
In the right-of-way.
And we've gotta somehow discharge that water.
Okay.
Correct?
Yeah, I don't know who did the tile in his yard, you know, how old it is, or how...
And I can't find any, anybody that can tell me whether the county put that tile in originally, or whether private property owners put it in. But I, I think legally, it's our responsibility to discharge that water from that can.
Yeah, if he'll allow that county to get on his property, might need a release from him.
Or right-of-way, construction right-of-way or something to, to... But I guess what I'd like to do is be able to tell him that we'll, we'll at the very least open that can up and build some type of an earthen levee to direct that to the valley, so that it doesn't flood his yard.
Yeah. I, you'd probably have to talk to Richard, his equipment, and know, need some sort of agreement.
But do you see that as a possibility?
That's a possibility, yeah.
To levy, I mean, you've looked at it as well as I have, to possibly levy, levy that so that it directs it?
I don't know how far it goes or the outlet, it went through that woods, and that's all I saw was right there in his yard, so.
You didn't go any deeper than I did then.
Yeah. No, we didn't go any deeper.
I wasn't dressed to walk through briars and whatnot.
Yeah.
The other day. But I just, I guess I feel that it is our responsibility, the county's responsibility, to get that water discharged out of that can.
Well, that's your feelings, huh?
You, you don't think it is?
Well, it's not a legal drain, it's up to commissioners to drain it.
But any, any can that crosses the road is our responsibility to get water into it and get out, get it out of it, is it not?
Yeah, we don't want any blockage.
And that tile is blocking it and causing blowholes in his yard, which is in unsafe conditions. Somebody steps in one of those blowholes, and we're gonna get sued because our water's causing us blowholes as well as he could get sued.
Well, that's an agreement you have to work out with him to fix it. But you're not wanting to put a tile or anything in, just, just open it up?
No, I just, I just wanna get the water away from our can.
Okay. I can see that, yeah.
That, that's, that's my main concern, because I... That, that's, that's my main concern, because I, and I told him, I said, most likely, the county can't afford to go through there and clean all those trees and put in a new tile.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure those tree roots have got that tile plugged.
You might have some tree clearing.
Yeah, you know, and unless he wants, he can convince his adjoining property owner to do a joint venture and pay for the tree clearing, I don't see us, you know, I told him, I don't see us being able to fix that tile.
Yeah.
So I asked him, I said, if, if we can possibly get that water turned out on top of the ground at the end of our can, would he be acceptable with that? And he said, as long as we've figured out how, it wouldn't pool in his yard.
Yeah. Like I said, the outlet, I don't know how far we have to go to get an outlet, being three foot deep, that's how far we'd have to go.
But is that can three feet deep on the other side?
Well, that's what he told me. Eh, well, the other side, yeah, it's three foot deep to the invert.
So it's about at the bottom of that valley, the?
Probably. I don't know where the outlet was. We didn't go down and look at, for the outlet.
No, I mean, under the road.
Under the road, yeah. It's got another metal culvert in, straight up, and the two foot's at the bottom of that, and there's a grate over the top on the west side.
So otherwise, to dump it out on top, we may have to remove the can, current can, and raise it up?
No, we wouldn't want to do that. It'd be a three-foot deep ditch and it was side slope.
No, I mean, in order to be able to get the fall away from it, so that it would, I don't, I, I mean, it can't, we can't dig it out and it has to pond there before it runs on down the hill.
Yeah, you'd have to take it out, take it out through his yard, dig it, the hole, basically go out through his yard.
I guess we're going to have our engineer. Okay, thanks.
Bill Gray, his contractor. Good morning.
Okay. Where I'm going to start is on the, on the motor, we have bag here to get that poured out.
Thank you.
I put those crooks in your box. And this was without the crane, and Johnson Controls was at three thousand eight oh eight, and North Mechanical was at, was at four thousand seven twenty. And this is without the crane. The crane is going to be about, about five hundred dollars is what it come to when they took them out of the quote. I haven't got with Schomos yet to find out for sure, but it's going to be probably right around that to get it craned up on the roof. So I'm going to need your approval on this, because we need to get this taken care of now. I mean, I tightened the belts and oiled it all I can, it's just, I just want to go, to go out. Because if it goes out, we're going to lose our air. If we wait till winter, we're going to lose our heat, so this is something we need to move on.
I don't think we're going to be without heat or air even.
No, no.
Also, Bill, you and I talked about possibly re-bearing.
Yes, and we're going to just leave the motor up there once we pull it out. We're going to leave it up there and see if we can re-bear in that motor.
Up there?
Up there, see if we can do it.
So, will he, will, if we approve this today, will the service rep be able to determine that before the crane's taken down? Whether he can re-bear in it up there or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you can't, we can bring it down.
Right, as soon as he gets the motor out, we can look at it and see what kind of condition that, everything's in, because we can't, you can't tell when it's inside.
And then that'll allow us to have a spare already sitting up there.
Yeah, if we can, if we can re-bear it up there and leave it there, then we'd already, we'd already have one there.
Yeah.
So this is the price, and we paid for the crane?
I'm sorry?
The price that they gave us is, we pay for the crane there?
We pay for the crane, yeah. Because see, the last one I had, they had the crane in there, and then you told me to go back and get one without the crane, so that's what this is. This was without the crane.
Thirty-eight oh eight for Johnson's?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we approve a purchase of the motor through Johnson Controls for the thirty-eight oh eight, and that we have Bill go ahead and line up a crane and get that done.
I'll second the motion.
Bill moves in second at all. A favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
I'll get, I'll get, need to sign, copy that. I'll get with her and get it to them. The other thing I have was the judge wanted a wall and a door put up there for that office area.
Yes.
And I, I put that, those bids in your box, and Joe Builders Contractors bided two thousand four eighty-nine, and this was without finishing anything. And the Friendly contractor bid two thousand four hundred, and this was everything finished.
Have you used Friendly's?
I'm sorry?
Have you used Friendly's before?
I haven't, but I, I've run some references on them, and they're, they're, they're pretty good, what they do. Like I said, with Joe, that's not, that's not finishing it out, and with Friendly it is.
That was, just those two bids was it?
I'm sorry?
Just those two bids was it?
Yeah.
I'll move to approve the Friendly doing it, the job of two thousand four hundred.
Thank you.
Bill moves in second for Friendly to do the contracting work for the courtroom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Okay, the only other thing I have, and I don't want to give away the price on this yet, because I'm waiting on another, waiting on another bid, but we got some control problems with the computer system in the courthouse. We, we got a boiler controller down now. I'm having to manually operate it, and it's, it's a, it's a madhouse. If we lose one or two more controllers, we're really going to be in bad shape. So I, I'm in the process of getting the system, I'm in the process with Johnson to get in the system combined with the Medifist system that we have at the jail. They can do that. And they can do it and leave our old controls here, and as they go bad, we can replace them. Instead of replacing them all at once and doing a complete install, they can leave what's here and incorporate in with the Medifist control. We can still control everything. And then as they go bad, we replace them then. Like I said, I don't want to give away the price, because I'm waiting on another bid. As soon as I get the other one.
So there are other companies can do the same thing then?
Well, I don't know, I don't know if they can incorporate it.
I mean, you're going to be.
They probably won't be able to incorporate it. What they'll have to do is they'll do a complete system here and do separate, like we got right now. But with this, but with this one, it'll all be one.
Integrated.
Integrated with the jail. And it'll all be, we can control everything, and we'll have access to everything. This way, this system that's in here now, the company you know went out of business right after they put it in, of course, we haven't had no control or no software updates or anything on the system. We've just been going hands-on when we have a problem, so. And we got like a hundred and eighty VAE boxes with controllers in them. I mean, they're not real expensive controllers, but that's a lot of controllers. And we've just been lucky that we haven't had more go out than what we have.
Michael, you have?
Yeah.
And this would also, what he's talking about, would also bring up to date our controls to jail. So it would update the software and that kind of thing there. And these control boards he's talking about are not, not computers per se, so it's not something that I can work on or replace. It's pretty much a little box that's mounted to the piece of equipment that routes electrical signals.
I've just been through it, so.
Yeah, so it, it's not something that I can do anything with, short of, you know, the normal first step of IT of turn it off and turn it back on again and see if it resets it, and if not, it's, it's beyond what, anything that, that we can do as far as ourselves for, you know, modifying or updating or anything like that. So it's not, unfortunately, it's not something that Bill or I can work together on to do anything with, so.
Well, we appreciate that you tried.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I really appreciate Michael's help, because he's been a big help.
And, and that's what you've given us, to Johnson?
Yes, I just don't want to.
So I need to hold that back?
Yeah, we need to hold that until I get the other one in. Because like I said, the other sys, the other ones, they're going to have, they're going to, they're going to bid to replace the whole system. They're going to have to, because they've got no access to Medifist, and they can't incorporate it. So you're going to still have two systems, but what I'm trying to get away from is having somebody that, well, I'm not saying they will, but if they come in here and put it in and go out of business, we're right back where we was at, and I don't want to.
And, and one thing to point out, too, for the people from the public, is the age of this system is fourteen years old. I mean, how many pieces of electronics do, does anybody have that go fourteen years without starting to fail? And it's a specialized system, so you don't have a whole lot of places to, to get replacements, so.
How would we expect that?
Fourteen years ain't that long. Yeah, but how many times would you turn it on? So.
Did you open your emails this morning?
I haven't.
We got Ledgerwood's estimate.
Okay, I haven't seen that.
If you want to talk about those two, the two estimates.
Actually, I don't have them with me, but if you've got them.
I've got it here.
Yeah, we can.
We, we got two proposals. We were able to finally get two proposals for replacing the shingle portion of the annex building.
Yep.
Roof. We received a proposal from Schomos, and I'm assuming, this is dated back in November. I'm assuming he's going to.
Yeah, he'll honor it. I talked to him, yes.
For twenty-two thousand nine ninety-five. And we received a proposal from Ledgerwood Home Restoration from, for twenty-seven thousand three hundred today. And Bill had several, he had quite a bit of trouble trying to get anybody to bid on it. I finally found Ledgerwood Restoration that would bid on it.
Yeah, because most people wouldn't even look at it, because it's, or it's.
Slate.
The slate roof.
They don't want to deal with taking off the slate.
Yeah.
So we have those two proposals, and, and I guess I'm thinking that we need to move forward with that, so we can get that done yet this year.
Okay.
Schomos?
Five thousand dollars cheaper than.
Yeah.
And they're local, I love it.
Ledgerwood is somewhat local, they're Hagerstown area, so, and he does a lot of work in Fayette County now, has, has been doing some work. But I, I remember that we approved a proposal, providing that they'll honor this price at twenty-two nine ninety-five.
And I'll make sure of that. I'll call and make sure of that, but I'm sure they will.
And then we're also working, Bill and I have been working on getting the trim painted for the annex, the white trim and the courthouse.
Yes.
And we've gotten one proposal so far from that, and I'm working on.
Working on a second.
A second.
Waiting on it. Yeah, okay. Yeah, they're supposed to come along.
Very good.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Bill moves in second to accept this term proposal for fixing the roof on the annex. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
And I'll call them today and confirm that, and then go ahead and have them scheduled.
Okay, great.
Okay, that's all I have.
We get the air conditioning working, we get the roof on the building, and get some paint on the windows, we may have this place rebuilt, just like it needs to be.
We may. You have a question, David?
The roof repairs to the annex primarily in the paint work, cum cap. We asked the council to put money in cum cap to cover these.
Okay.
For, for this year, so.
Okay.
It's, it's there in cum cap.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, I appreciate it.
Michelle.
I am here to ask for a new hire. We had a new position granted as of July first with the grant for the increase in population workload. I'm asking that you approve Craig Pennington to come over to Community Corrections, and he can get started on the case management system, learning the case management and the system that we're going to use for Drug Court until the, I want to hire him until the Drug Court actually gets its certification, gets going, and the staff gets all the certifications that they need by bringing him over to our department earlier. He'll be ready to just jump right in, and when the Drug Court does start up.
So what's my idea?
Dale, has that position been approved by the council yet?
We haven't seen a one forty-four yet.
Yes, you did at the last meeting. It was typed to be announced. It was on the, because I did the complete one forty-four because the raises went in, and that position was on there to start at thirty thousand and four hundred.
I, I didn't see anything with Craig's name on it.
No, it didn't have his name. It had, it was left vacant to be announced.
Okay.
But the position was on there at thirty thousand four hundred.
All standing correct.
I'll move to approve the one forty-four through the Community Corrections Department.
Second.
Bill moves in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any mail? Is there any mail came? And I had to work on the lease on, under old business, but that's already been taken care of. Is there any other old business? Okay, new business is the appointment of our county attorney. Ann Sanders. And that's a contractual position, so we don't do a one forty-four, right? I approve the motion to accept Ann Sanders as our county attorney.
I'll move to appoint Ann Sanders as our county attorney. Second.
Bill moves in second, is all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Now that big sack of papers you received this morning? You can officially go through them now.
You can look at them now. Okay, it wasn't before.
I'd like to thank Jane for helping us out with the State Board of Council and getting the water problem stripped out with the County Highway. I think she'll be commended for it.
Sounds like a good plan. We need to thank Jane for a lot of things that she does. She's a busy lady and an asset to the community.
Thank you.
Don't get the big head, though. I'll move to approve the claims and paper.
Second.
Bill moves in second to approve claims and paper, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Jane, did you get the email from Debbie?
Yes, yes, she's already been over and signed that claim form.
Okay, all right. Hey, it'll prove your claims. Okay. Next, next claims, right?
Sorry? Yes, it'll be the next.
It'll be the next claim. It sounds like she's just about through everything?
Yes, yes.
Are the dollars, I forget what the dollars we were looking for, are they?
It's around thirty, thirty-seven thousand, I think, so, yeah.
Aren't we, isn't she pretty close to finding all of it?
She is, she's done an awesome job.
She has, I can't believe how quickly she. And budgets are coming in from all departments?
Yes, I have the majority of them.
Good. Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. I'd love it if I will sign the bills.
I think these are still black.
It's only the state that wants to prove it now for some reason.
The title for that vehicle going to the air conditioner, does the president need to sign that, or can anyone move the three ends?
It's already signed, Sean.
Is that everything?
Chance out there needing that signature.
I caught that.
Well, I signed it when I gave it to him.
Okay, let's, I told you that'd be it.
Yeah, okay.
I think so, is that it?
Yep.
I'll move to John.
Second.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.